Dear Heavenly Father, Creator of Heaven and Earth, we ask for your guidance in decisions you're about to make tonight. Lord, we ask your blessing on the Catoosa County's citizens and those who serve. And also, Lord, we ask your blessing on the United States of America. Lord, we ask this land in your heavenly name, please bless the United States of America, the state of Georgia, and Catoosa County with your great love.
Good evening, may I? Salute the Lord.
Praise the Lord. Through the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Cutler?
Here.
Chairman Henry?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
At this time, are there any items to add or remove from the agenda? Do I have the motion to approve the agenda as is?
So.
All in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
If everyone's had a chance to look over the amendments from the July 17 meeting, can I get a motion to approve these amendments?
So.
Say aye.
All in favor of approving the amendments, does that?
Aye.
At this time, do we have any other appearances today that would like to speak? Now, if you hear on the zoning case that have come up in a public hearing, but this is general, do we have anybody in the audience that wants to speak?
Good evening, I'm George Battersby, District 4. And first off, I'd like to thank the Catoosa County Animal Control for using social media a lot more than they haven't been. It's encouraging. Hopefully, at some point, they'll get where they don't have to put down any animals other than sick ones. At the last meeting, I noticed where a letter received bus was purchased. I realized the county didn't pay for it, but the county titled it, registered it, and insured it. And there's no, it's not handicapped equipped, which I think is horrible. It's not wheelchair equipped. And after that, the traffic on 151 coming from the Wood Station direction is, it's been havoc and it's going to get worse starting tomorrow when school goes back. One of the biggest problems that I've seen is the traffic light at Industrial Boulevard and Candy Lane is the big culprit. And I think those, that light should be turned off and just have a right turn only. And I realize this is probably the wrong place to come to give suggestions, but anyway, it would save a lot of havoc. If there is a true emergency, it will be a nightmare. Because last, last I seen, Poplar Springs was closed beside Hope. If there was a real emergency, a disaster, it would be a nightmare. Lastly, at the last meeting, of course, we can't speak at the meeting. We only, at the end of the meeting, we only speak at the beginning. But I witnessed what I thought was a circus between the Mr. Henry and Mr. Long against these people who I have no idea who they are. They're wanting to build a 90 to 100 houses off Moore Road. You all performed a tag team. You threw up every hurdle you could for them. And I think when it comes to a development, since Mr. Henry is a developer builder himself, I think he ought to recuse himself would be the proper thing to do from such a situation. These people are going to build approximately 100 houses, a 200 grand a house. That's $20 million, of which the school department will get 72 percent. More than enough to start planning for additional school or add on to what they have. My goodness, stopping progress like that. You put up every hurdle and then the final one was, well, you have to check the school superintendent. Like 100 houses are going to be completed the same week or the same month, and these kids are going to have to go to school. As small as these lots are, I would imagine that this is going to be more for the elderly than young families, I would think. That's small a lot, who knows? But it will take several years to build. But I couldn't believe what I witnessed. If they pass zoning and nobody, none of the community objected to it, let them build, don't tell them, don't tell them or us what we want or where we want to live. I live in a 10 acre lot, but that's me. Sometime I may want a tiny lot. Again, I think Mr. Henry should definitely recuse himself, just like he did when he got his piece of property rezoned last year. He recused himself, which was the right thing to do. But I think he needs to do it every time a development comes into play. Thank you.
My name's Billis Williams, now living in Catoosa County. And I noticed that tonight's the agenda that y'all have the proposed budget for 2019. And I know you don't have to answer any questions, but on page 123, I think I've been asking y'all this for about 10 years so that we would know where our funds are going. You still have it listed under professional services. And I think everybody in the county by now that I talked to knows that it's an economic, Northwest Georgia economic development. And I think the 71,000 that is the actual, y'all budgeted, 98,800 actually 71,000, but the director makes 86,400. So we're kind of missing something here. I think you should label things in that budget, the, on page 123, for exactly what they really are. Thank you.
I'm Sheree Smellin, I live in the county. I would like to address Carl. Carl, I thank the world of you. You're a very intelligent person and I just commend you for handling the finances in this county like you have. However, when you get up to give us a financial report, could you please maybe put it in a little bit simpler terms? Like do away with the favorable and the unfavorable and all the best that we don't understand. I would appreciate it. Thank you.
At this time, do you have a proclamation to speak?
Mr. Chairman, proclamation, National Health Center Week 2018. Whereas for over 50 years, community health centers have provided high quality, affordable, comprehensive primary and preventative health care in our nation's underserved communities, delivering value to and having a significant impact on America's health care system. And whereas the country's largest primary health care network, health centers, are the health care home for 27 million Americans in over 10,000 communities across the nation. One in every 12 in the United States gets their health care in a community health center. And whereas health centers are a critical element of the health care system serving both rural and urban populations and often providing the only accessible and dependable source of primary health care in their communities. Nationwide, health care centers serve one in six residents of rural areas. And whereas everyday health centers develop new approaches to integrating a wide range of services beyond primary care, including oral health, vision, behavioral health, and pharmacy services to meet the needs and challenges of their communities. And whereas health care centers are governed by a patient majority board, ensuring that the patients of each health care center are engaged in their own health care decisions. And whereas health care centers are locally owned and operated small businesses that serve as a critical economic engine, helping to power local economies by generating 45.6 billion in economic impact in some of the country's most economically deprived communities. And whereas health care centers nationally employ more than 200,000 people, including physicians, nurse practitioners, physician assistants, and certified nurses with midwells to work as a part of a multi-disciplinary clinical teams designed to treat the whole patient. And whereas the health care center model continues to prove an effective means of overcoming barriers to health care access, including geography, income, insurance status, and in doing so improves health care outcomes and reduces health care system costs. And whereas health care centers are on the front lines of emerging health care crisis, providing access to care for our nation's veterans, addressing the opioid epidemic, and responding to public health threats in the wake of natural disasters. Whereas National Health Care Center Week affords the opportunity to recognize Americans, America's nearly 1,400 health care centers with over 10,400 delivery sites, their dedicated staff, board members, patients, and all those responsible for their continued success and growth since the first health care centers opened their doors more than 50 years ago. And whereas during National Health Care Center Week, we celebrate the legacy of America's health care centers and their vital role in shaping the past, present, and future of America's health care system. Now, therefore, the Catoosa County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim August 13 through 18, 2018, as National Health Care Center Week. We encourage Americans to take part in this week by visiting their local health care center and celebrating the important partnership between America's health care centers and the communities they serve. So resolve the 7th day of August 2018, Catoosa County Board of Commissioners by Stephen L. Henry, Chairman, Patthea, Melissa M. Hannah, Clerk.
At this time, we'll move on to Ms. Dana Reeves. We have a presentation for her. Very much appreciated.
All these years that we've given trouble.
Thank you. It's been lovely to have you here. Chairman Henry, Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Winters, Commissioner Cutler, and Commissioner Long. I want to thank you for allowing me to be placed on the agenda tonight. I want to talk about a concept to enhance the educational opportunities for children in Catoosa County. As you know, Catoosa County Public Schools began exploring the possibility of a college and career academy last year. The graduation task force researched college and career academies as a graduate Catoosa initiative. Georgia College and Career Academies are specialized chartered high schools with a mission to provide a highly trained and skilled workforce for the local community. Students who attend the college and career academy complete high school graduation requirements while taking college classes to earn a technical certificate or an associate's degree at no cost to the student or their parents. Students also participate in internships and apprenticeships with local employers. Some academy students will graduate from high school with the skills they need to enter the workforce and a good paying job if they choose not to obtain a four-year degree. College and career academies have improved and have increased the graduation rate as well as prepare students for post-handarian education for a career. We applied for and received a planning grant from the Technical College System of Georgia. Georgia Northwestern Technical College is our partner, and together we completed the feasibility study. Since listening to the community is very important to our Board of Education, you'll remember that I presented the potential for a college and career academy to you at your recent intergovernmental meeting. And the response that we had has been overwhelmingly positive from all of our stakeholder groups. In steering committee meetings with Georgia Northwestern Technical College and business partners, we've determined five new pathways to prepare our students for jobs in our area. The pathways are what we call schools to be offered in a college and career academy. The first school is a school of building, design, and power. I remember when I was in high school, there were many young men who were planning to become plumbers and electricians. Unfortunately, we're facing a time of critical need for workers in these skilled areas. In this pathway, students can learn skilled trades, including plumbing, electrical, HVAC repair, construction, and welding. They can also take more advanced classes in engineering. The second school that we plan to offer in the college and career academy is the School of Law and Justice. I've had many conversations with Sheriff Steads, so I understand that we have a great need for employees in law enforcement, fire and rescue, emergency responders, and 911 center operations. Students have recently pursued careers in crime scene investigations and forensic because they see that on television. But we need to expose students to many career opportunities in this public service pathway. The third school that we plan to offer is the School of Medicine and Nursing. Every career opportunities for the future report includes job and health care. We know we need doctors, dentists, and registered nurses. However, there are a number of well-paying jobs for students with a technical certification or a two-year degree. Our college and career academy students will be able to go into the medical field when they graduate high school or continue to a higher degree while attending two years of college and high school free of charge. The next school that we plan to offer is called the School of Early Childhood Education. For the first time in many years, we're facing a shortage of teachers. We know that more and more people are choosing to live in Catoosa County, even if they're working outside the county. On average, our teachers have 20 years of experience. Since we will be needing to hire a large number of teachers in the next five to 10 years, we plan to include an education pathway so we can grow our own teachers. And the last school is called the School of Information Technology. We can't deny that we live in a technology-driven society. I doubt that anyone sits down to dinner without someone picking up their smartphone. Every industry at every level is going to need technology experts. There are many well-paying jobs that students can be qualified to fill with a technical certificate or an associate's degree from Georgia Northwestern, so they can get a two-year jump to start on a four-year degree. According to a 2017 Georgia Department of Labor report, less than 3% of the residents in our area hold a two- or four-year college degree. Over 50% of our students in our school system qualify as economically disadvantaged. And unfortunately, due to their family's economic situation, they don't always see college as a reality. We have an amazing opportunity to give every high school student from all economic backgrounds the opportunity to attend college free. The students who participate in the college and career academy pathway will not only be employable, they will have highly skilled, be highly skilled for every good paying job that's out there. College and career academies have been changing lives in Georgia for over 15 years. And I'm confident that it's time for us to make this opportunity available for the children in Catoosa County. But here's where I need your help. In order for all of our high school students to take advantage of these new educational opportunities, this college and career academy must be located in a central location in our county, equal distance from all three high schools. After a year of research, I've determined that there is a perfect location for a college and career academy in Catoosa County. Commissioners, I'm here tonight to respectfully ask you to partner with the Board of Education so that we may build a college and career academy on the Benton campus. As you can see, I brought a conceptual drawing of the college and career academy because I want you to see what's possible. You can partner with us in this opportunity. The college and career academy could be located on 4.89 acres of the Benton Place campus on Catoosa Circle. The academy would mirror the architecture of the existing buildings and be approximately 40,000 square feet. We are in the process of applying for the Technical College System of Georgia startup grant. And our plan is to include the college and career academy as an East Blossom Estates project on the referendum in March of 2021. So in closing, this partnership would require the Catoosa County Board of Commissioners to pass the resolution to convey 4.89 acres of the Benton Place campus on Catoosa Circle together with a mutual parking and access easement containing the 1.26 acres, both as shown on the map, to the Catoosa County School District for the purpose of amphithebanship and operation by the district of a college and career academy. This partnership would also require the county commissioners and the school district to enter into an intergovernmental agreement to facilitate joint governmental activities, including the training of the students, the operation of the college and career academy, and similar joint activities. So I want to thank you for your consideration and allowing me to be on the agenda tonight. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Doing this, we spent too long, I believe. It isn't that beautiful, the work, the view, and the fact of work. I think that's great, I have way to give people that employment. But I always try to look for all the people and things that will do who are going to be a partner. You said 911 Center? Is the one that wanted to do the things?
Yes, we want to include that. The sheriff suggested that and the School of Law and Justice.
We've got a really outdated 911 center. Dennis just happens to be here. It would be great if, when you're living at it, we could find a spot for the 911 center and work with the offer training. Maybe that's a cool idea, but that's not a very easy place to be employed.
I think that's a great idea. I think part of the concept of the college and career academy is to provide internships and training opportunities for students. All kind of college and career academies do have and include a business within their structure. So if you would be willing to intern our students in the 911 center, I could see that would be a great partnership and also strengthen our application for the startup grant because it would show that we have a commitment and a partnership between the school system and the county government. I think that's a great idea.
And is your drawing there?
Yes, sir. As you can see, the college and career academy would be located next to the amphitheater. We could share parking. And I think it's a great concept because we're not there on Saturday and Sunday when you would be having concerts at the amphitheater. And of course, our college and career academy would also include a large meeting space that we could share.
So Dana, basically, the line of need we already have?
Yes, sir.
Just sitting there unused, actually.
And it is centrally located within pretty much equal distance of all three of our high schools. I believe it's the perfect location for a college and career academy. Completes the Benton campus and it gives the opportunity for our students to take advantage of not only the public library, but the services there on the Benton campus.
And also keeps another place of property that's been out of the town.
Yes, sir.
And talking about, I mean, ideas of priority, like the sheriff said, part of the fire or 911 that our sheriff may be, know the fire department. Know they have the explorer program, but maybe certainly a program where it's like I buy the loan and I with them to find out. Always supported this ever since it's been brought up here a few years back.
Yes, I think there are so many opportunities for our students to get hands-on experience, to determine what kind of careers they want to go into, and then also steer them into the occupations that we know we need in our county because we want our students to stay here.
They drive something, then they can move on about another career and not wait for their high school and make that decision.
And have debt behind them because they get an opportunity to explore many, many careers and have an idea, a very good idea of what they want to do when they graduate from high school.
A lot of their jobs, by the time we train them, we get a lot of money in and they find out they don't do it.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Reeves, thank you very much for your time. And I have to ask you.
Thank you. I appreciate you listening to us and being willing to partner with us.
You know, Ms. Reeves, I just want to say one other thing. The county benefits as well because we're able to use some of the facilities.
Yes, sir.
So some joint venture, teaching and county use.
Many college and career academies in Georgia not only house a particular business within their structure, but they also house economic development. Because this, what college and career academies are all about, is economic development. Yes, sir.
Just in case she leaves before we get done, I would like to commend her and the school board for the, I know, went here about three weeks ago with a presentation that you gave at Ringo High School and the State Legislature Study Committee that was up here in the two standing. I learned a lot at that and you gave a very good presentation and found out how far advanced we are. Actually, probably one of the top schools in the state for our security and stuff. So thanks for all your work on that.
Thank you. We're glad to host and share best practices that the legislators could take that because their study committee is going to make recommendations or possibly pass legislation about best practices in school safety. So we were honored to share.
They need to get you to come down and speak though.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, tonight we'd like to recognize the Star Award for the Second Quarter of 2018. Diane Quatique was nominated and selected because she went above and beyond the college duty for service to the citizens of Catoosa County. When Donald Brown, our director of public works, one of our larger county departments, lost his administrative assistant, assistant for several months due to illness, Diane stepped up and volunteered to help in this area. Diane has many years of service for the county and in the purchasing department. She was very familiar with the needs for the requisition of supplies and equipment for most of the department and was a natural for this area. And got Don Buster here, like to speak, also on her behalf.
The, when I found out that I was an employee of Medical League, and I followed them with four weeks. And so I asked Diane, and she said she would. And so then I told her, I'll, and we talked to Carl, and Carl resistively let me take her. And so then I told her, I'll, and we talked to Carl, and Carl resistively let me take her. He let me take her. And then she came in and just, you know, you know, we didn't miss a beat. And that says a lot about her. And you know, she, I kept her longer than, than I told Carl I was going to keep her. So I had to dodge Carl for about three weeks and ask her back. You know, companies talk about employees being the most valuable resource. And I think Diane is no doubt one of the county's most valuable resources. And so congratulations. We appreciate everything you do.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Carl, you're up again.
Yes, sir.
And Diane did her other job too at the same time as we take you through the group job. It was a whole count. And then very good job, Buster, to be right here. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Chairman, on August the first, the county advertised in the local newspaper the current two thousand and eighteen tax digest and five-year history of levy. Due to reassessment, that was a rollback to the mileage rate this year. The commissioners decided to go with the rollback rate. So the proposed mileage rate advertised was six point seven three four. This reflected a rollback of point two one six miles, a decrease from the prior year mileage rate. The budget, the proposed budget was then compared, composed with the collective input of all the department heads, elected officials, and outside agencies. We are tonight presenting this proposal to the Board of Commissioners for that review and at the same time, made it available to the public in the administration building and the courthouse as well as on the county website. Also, the Board of Commissioners are required to conduct one public hearing. That public hearing is scheduled for August the fourteenth at nine a.m. in the administration building. At that time, all persons wishing to be heard concerning the proposed budget may appear and comment at the public hearing. The budget is scheduled to be adopted by Board of Commissioners at the next regular scheduled meeting, which is August the twenty-first at six p.m. in this administration building. The public is also invited to attend and be heard upon the adoption of the budget resolution.
Ms. Grant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This is a proposal to approve a purchase of two thousand and eight used equipment trailer. Public Works Department currently has an eight-foot, forty-eight-foot equipment trailer. This trailer will replace a forty-one-year-old trailer that was taken out of service in two thousand and seventeen. The goal is to find a good used trailer that will meet the needs of the department that have the price. United Reynolds offered a two thousand and eight bedwell, forty-eight-foot, eighty-thousand-pound hydraulic tail trailer in good condition for twenty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. And so I got a couple more quotes for new trailers. And the bottom was fifty-six thousand and the high end was ninety-six thousand. So we, we, we've used the trailer for a few weeks now. The mechanics have gone under and over and checked it out a lot. It's a good trailer. So we're just asking that we purchase that in two thousand and fourteen response.
Do I have a motion?
So.
Second. We have any questions for Ms. Grant? What time do you need to do it?
It's eighty thousand dollars.
Eight thousand?
Eighty.
Eighty, then? And to be clear, we're replacing the trailer that's forty-one years old.
Feeling is a feeling nineteen seventy-seven, ma'am.
We've got our money's worth of that.
We've got one of our own.
We're not getting beat on this one.
Do I?
We're not getting beat with this one. You're going to slip right in the pot.
Oh, man, that's a bleed over my lawn.
I have a bag of trees on the floor.
Sorry about that.
Good job, Dan. Any other questions, Ms. Grant? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Grant, you're up.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. This is, this is a request to declare county fixed asset surplus. These items will be auctioned on go deals, disposed of, depending on the condition of each item, how they could be vehicles, coffee, this many used equipment, furniture with attachment sheets. So there's a ninety-six van, a couple, couple ground bags that have been retired from the sheriff's department, a ninety-five twenty-year-old dump truck, a thirty-year-old pickup truck, and a lot of cherished coffee and lots of stuff. I will say, since we've been using go deals since two thousand and fourteen, we've brought back about two hundred thousand dollars. So that's good.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
Any questions, Ms. Grant? Eighty-six grand, I'm afraid, I would not have shared.
Yeah, because that four-door, it was a four-door crew cab, two-wheel drive.
Yeah.
We've been running around for a couple of years with this, this time.
Do we have any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Dana?
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. Before I get into my item, I do want to say how excited I am with the potential opportunity of having a partnership with the school system and potentially need to have a one center. I'm sure we can definitely make that education piece work. It works, but it needs to be improved on. I'll say this, in the short time I've been here, we started working with the school system, set up on their security programs and partnering with them on that. It become a piece of their school security program. I'm extremely impressed with where they're at. They're light years above and ahead of most school systems. I wish my children were in schools as protected as well as theirs are. So I'm looking forward to that opportunity and I appreciate your support for that. But the reason I'm here this evening is on July seventeenth, Board of Commissioners approved an agenda item to purchase, to do the first phase of purchasing new portable mobile radios for Motorola radio for those that are ending their, nearing their end of life, useful life. In that process, we teamed up with all the public safety agencies within Katusa County as well as our city partners. And we were able to make a large enough purchase when Motorola came back and offered a buyback program. I think it's a good idea, a buyback program, because if not, some of us will end up with radios that we really have no use for, that you can't really sell because they can't really be maintained. So Motorola has offered three hundred and thirty-seven dollars per radio in a buyback program. And I'm requesting the approval to sell back a total of sixteen radios from nine one one, two radios from EMA to Motorola for a total price of five thousand three hundred and ninety-two dollars, which would be applied as a credit to not void EMA overall purchase price for this year.
Do I have a motion? So, who? Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next item, one of the, in trying to, in trying to bring our nine one one center to where it needs to be, to its full capacity and really optimal running, one of the things I found is we're having some difficulty with our records management of employees. Our employee records, training records are kept in a couple of different places right now. Our personnel records are kept in a completely different place right now. We have no system in place to identify when employees' training is running out. A lot of our employees have certifications which must be kept up over, you know, over two- or three-year period. And there's nothing in place to kind of notify us and keep track of that without manually doing it. And that's very difficult. I'm asking for the approval to enter into agreement with Guardian Software. It's a personnel software program. It's used by a lot of law enforcement agencies and nine one one centers. It's used by Katusa County Sheriff's Office. And it's a personnel tracking system. What it does is it's basically a personnel software system where we can maintain, track all their training records, accolades, disciplinary records, those type of things in it. Supervisors have access to be able to put daily notes. It'll help us in the training of new employees. As you know, we're sufficient, we have a big opening in our employee bank. We're really behind in employees. We're hiring. We have three of them start between last Friday and this Friday. We have three new employees starting and with the training. But this will help with the ability for supervisors and our training officers to give a weekly, a weekly update on employees' progress. And it will also work towards, I'm working towards a, I'd really like to see a student evaluation-based merit system when it comes to raise time. And this software will help us considerably with that. So what I'm asking for, I'm asking for the approval to enter into a one-year contract with Guardian Systems at the price of one thousand four hundred and ninety-four dollars for this employee software for the nine one one center. I will say that in talking with HR, county HR, they are considering the same thing. And this will be a trial process for them to look at what we're doing and evaluate whether it can work for the entire county overall or if there's other options for them.
Do we have a motion? No motion, sir. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Yes, Ms. Chairman, we have the, have received the contract for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen. The Federal Transportation Authority fifty-three eleven grant contract from GDOT. The amount is two hundred and seventy-five thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars. It's a fifty percent grant. That's the estimated cost of the transportation program.
Do we have a motion? Over. Do we have a question, Carl? Two seventy-five, two hundred and seventy-five dollars.
That's the, that's the fifty percent amount. The county does imagine.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Dana, come on, man. I forgot.
This should be the last one.
At least do it, you did it all night.
I do not want money here. So. I'm happy and proud and pleased to announce that on May twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen, Katusa County, working in partnership with the National Weather Service, received its first free recognition as a storm-ready community. Katusa County is only one of ninety-six counties in the state of Georgia to hold the Storm Ready Designation. This is a clear result of vision, leadership, and hard work and commitment to the citizens of Katusa County by Katusa County. Storm Ready is a national weather service program designed to recognize counties that have reached a high level of severe weather preparedness. To be recognized as a storm-ready county must, the county must be criteria established solely between the National Weather Service, state, local, emergency management agencies. The essence of the program is to ensure that the entire warning system performs properly when severe weather strikes. The system is comprised of the National Weather Service, which issues the warnings, the local emergency management, which ensures the warnings get communicated, and you, who respond properly to the warnings. When each part of the system performs well, lives and property are saved. Storm Ready recognizes those counties in which the system is most likely to perform well. The accomplishments required to contain the Storm Ready Community Designation include having a twenty-four-hour warning point and an emergency operations center, having multiple ways of receiving National Weather Service warnings, being able to monitor local weather and river conditions, having multiple ways of learning the public, promoting public readiness through community seminars and presentations, having a formal hazardous weather plan, having trained spotters, and conducting periodic drills and exercises. This is our first recertification from this program. And it'll be good for three years and then it'll go forward again in three years. So I want to thank you for the support of that. And I'm proud that, you know, we're, I think we're in a good place as far as the warnings and preparedness for the weather which we all know can happen here.
Thank you for our hard work.
Thank you.
Chief Dan, you got some good news for us? You're all the big guys. These there. Four people that's quite good.
Ms. Chairman, Commissioners, we do have some good news tonight. And I'd kind of like to say thank you for letting us to come in tonight, talk about the fire department, and give you a report of what's been going on with Katusa County Fire Department over the last year and a half since I've been here. First of all, I always try to still understand that, I like what Sumner Winston Churchill said, "We make a living by what we give; we make a life by what we give." And I think he immediately agreed that local safety, fire, law enforcement, dispatch, and EMS is really the life of giving and helping. And that's what I've always enjoyed about it. What, do this with this county fire department. It's your fire department. It belongs to the citizens out here. We have forty-seven career firefighters, seven part-time, and thirty-one volunteers. We operate seven fire stations, twelve engine guns, three takers, and two vans. Last year, we responded to three thousand one hundred and forty-five cows. This number is continuing to increase. As we say, that traffic continues and our community grows typically with that. More car wrecks, more responses. And as you can see, we were very busy last year adjusting cows. Community outreach, I really feel that being part of our community, going outside, reaching out to our community, helping them to be fire safety is very important. So far, we've installed two hundred and eighty-eight smoke alarms, two here and a third. We've conducted CPR classes and certified two hundred and seventy-four of our citizens in CPR. Fire convention events is fifty-six. And of course, two still took on big road, our fire convention, and had some of it. Along with this, community outreach is also a key element to our ISO. Along with this, community outreach is also a key element to our ISO rating schedule now. Our continued outreach, plans for June 19, fire safety inspections, 143, as you can see, pre-fire plans, we've conducted 238, and we still have more pre-fire plans we need to do. Of course, you can see the heightened inspections and painted extension classes, and it still never ceases, you know, to amaze me as where social media is going. And so far, this, this year, we've had 99,000 impressions just on our Facebook page. So, you know, that's one way to get your citizens involved and let them know what you're doing, is Facebook and social media. As you can see, we step into the schools to teach our kids about fire safety, don't play with matches, and we have fun with them. But also, our new fire dog costume, I purchased last year, kids get really very excited to see it. And so, we save lives by education, that even so much better for us. The burn bill, we bought a burn builder recently, and volunteers do most of the work. This is required also by ISO, so also it's very important to take new firefighters in and introduce them into the heat, the smoke, and the fire, what they're being encountered. This is over on Station City, it's on Three North Road, City's behind the fire station. You can see that this is the type of training that we conduct, and also we need to do this, according to ISO, we need to do this 18 hours a year per firefighter, put them inside some type of fire, displays, smoke, search and rescue drills, fire tag. We also started physical training. I feel that having a firefighter who's in good physical condition, which is a prerequisite departments have, a physical agility test, have a lot greater sales on property. With that, too, we have some, now credits, 10 hours per month per firefighter with physical training. So that's, it's a good score, scoring two with the rating scale. Professional development is also key. We spent $14,470, 149 members volunteering career, or per member, I'm sorry, 149 hours per member. You can see the list of all the certifications that we obtained this past year. MPQs, National Professional Qualifications of Firefighters, of course, on a team basis. What is ISO? ISO is very important in our community. They come in and objectively rate the fire department on its ability to suppress fires. They also looked at the water system, the dispatch center, and now they looked at the community risk reduction happens. So there's four areas that they grade now. One is the best, and ten is the worst. How does that affect? A lot of documentation, you can see when ISO came in for a recent inspection, this was all the documentation that we had to produce and be there. So even though a fire department's doing it, we had to say and prove that we're doing it on paper. So that comes labor-intensive to produce a lot of documents. Pre-fire planning, we're conducting this on every commercial, industrial, office complex, schools, and our facilities. We look at, we calculate the native fire flows. So if a particular building's on fire, there might be a native fire flows for about 50 minutes, and then we go back and assess what's in the ground to see if we have the capabilities to suppress that fire. And again, that's where ISO looks at. If this building has a floor rate of 3,000 gallons a minute, can we get it out of the ground quick enough with the distance and the hoses carried on the truck? So they look at all those features. Effective November 1st, I'm proud to say that in our last ISO inspection, we went from class five to three, three minutes, and this is the fact of November 1st of this year. I'd like to just kind of run it down, what does that mean for homeowners? And of course, fire service is the only department that directs, so it really puts money back into taxpayers' pocket by paying some lower than insurance rates. And I always tell the citizens, when they call me, you know, ask your insurance agent, if my fire department was class 10, what would we be? Now that there are three, what would my new resident? And this, out of 43,94 fire parks in the U.S., that are graded by ISO, Coteau's County fires are 33X, or will be coming through first, and on 3,456 fire parks in the country, boast that three. On the lookout here in Georgia, 831 fire parks in the state, and 128 have a class three. So we're in that, that top 10%. We called a couple insurance companies, actually called three. We looked on the websites, the average home in the Coteau's County is $115,000. We called three insurance companies just to get an average. Class 10, for class 10, we'd be placed 1,700. Class 5, which we were, 779, and now to the three is 641 per year. We just looked at, you know, no cost replacement, no, no value inside the home, which is basically $150,000, and took that average. So as you can see, of course, you know, we're looking for a fire department, has a three, and Coteau's has a three now. And with both departments, with the three, you know, you're saving at least 22,334 homes if you just took that average, we're gonna save at least $3 million for our homeowners. Obviously, if my house is worth more, obviously I'm gonna save a little more. So we asked, out of curiosity, if we had a $150,000 home, and it contains a $6,000, what would that premium be? And one insurance company quoted, class 5 is 1,701, class 3, we're in 905, savings of 156. And if my home's $150,000, you can see the savings of that, too, I tell you. So again, we're really proud of the accomplishments of the class 3, and what it'll do for our citizens. And again, just to take the faith of the board. One thing I always like to tell our citizens, even if you took ISO, and ISO wasn't here, the save that we do as far as fire suppression efforts, last year out of 48 working structure fires, 2.6 million was in property loss. That's a big number. If I had the fire department not provided on scene quickly and extinguished the fire, the properties were valued at $9.1 million. So we just take the value of the home off the tax record, and then we go to the calculation we had to figure the property loss. And our correct budget last year was $300,000. So we kind of like that, you know, show us the work to the fire department, we're very proper with the three, well, our citizens will be willing to come into the night and bear with you the news of the class 3 fire department. Thanks for your time, any questions?
Maybe all your hard work. More than just paperwork, y'all write in the items, the pressure, a lot of it too.
It's both, it's paperwork and labor-intensive, but, you know, we're going to be here, these are the thoughts we needed to do.
That's a big conversation.
Carl?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to report on the revenue for 10th month of the current fiscal year into July. Accumulated loss receipts for the first 10 months of the fiscal year 2018 exceeded the budget by $364,000, 6.5%. Also exceeded the same 10-month period prior year, $367,000, 6.5%. Loss receipts for the most recent 12 months exceeded the prior 12 months, $411,000, 6.1%. The SPOSS receipts over the 48-month period of the 2014 SPOSS cycle were $39,345,000, 82% of budget. SPOSS receipts for the most recent 12 months exceeded the prior 12 months, $632,000, 6.6%. The current month exceeded the same period prior year, $57,000, 7.9%. So we're, again, we are up to 82% of the current SPOSS cycle, and we're still running favorable in all the areas.
This town will move into old business, James.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A zoning case number 1261-18, rezoning of Tax map 21D, parcel 44, from A1 to R3. The applicant DL Rowe has requested the property be rezoned from A1 to R3 for developed purposes. The property would be developed into a residential community. Request was approved by the Planning Commission on June 26, 2018, with vote of 4 to 0, as was stated by the board at a previous board meeting.
Is there anybody here for or against the last statement?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I'm Lloyd Lance. I'm here tonight as agent for DL Rowe, as a zoning case. I have two gentlemen with me tonight. First is Mr. Derek Blackwood, I'm sorry, Derek Blackwood from App Engineering, and then I have Mr. Frank Jenkins from Jenkins and Bullman, BC. And at this time, if I may, I'd like to introduce Mr. Blackwood to speak, and then Mr. Jenkins will speak.
Got a couple of drawings that you may already have, but if you don't mind, if I can pass those out, please.
My name is Derek Blackwood, again, I'm from HMA Engineers. On behalf of the developer and the owner, we are requesting your consideration for approval for the rezoning case to rezone the 52-acre parcel from A1 to R3 for 103 single-family lots as for residential subdivision off of Moore Road. As you may be aware, during this process, we've gone through several different layouts. We started off initially requesting RTZ, where we showed 49 townhouse units and 68 single-family units. After that was initially submitted, staff came back and requested that we relooked at the plan and possibly consider R1, which we looked at, and given the lot yield that we would, we would get out of that, it just wasn't feasible to go R1. So we came back with a plan of R3. We removed all the townhouse lots and stayed single-family with 103 lots, but had a smaller lot size on the plan. As was mentioned previously, the, the request for the 103 lots was approved, or was recommended for approval by Planning Commission for nothing, and we received no notice.
Just preparing to issue an approval for R3, since we're ready, not to approve of the 103 lot.
The R3?
Yes, R3. So that, and that's where we're getting skewed here, where we're looking for a R3 zoning, but we're bringing a flat that has 104 variances. And so, it's getting, when you say R3, can you get 104 lots following the guidelines of R3?
Which one in this particular is the problem? With, with variances.
Certainly the 104.
103, for the 103 lots, yes, sir.
That's, that's where we're getting skewed, is I don't think the debate's about, in my opinion, the zoning, the debate's about the 103 variances that come along with it. With typically, that would be a separate case, but in the way this is happening, y'all are intertwined together, which is making it a little more difficult.
With, with respect to the R3, if, if the variances are not approved, that's a separate, it is a separate case, and you would have to adhere to the guidelines of R3 zone, whatever those may be, lot widths, lot sizes, minimum lot sizes. So we are asking you to review and approve R3, subject to us going and getting variances on this. So that's, that's our decision. Yes, sir. Again, this, this request has received no opposition that we know of to date. We, as part of the plan, we would look to improve Moore Road, out to Pine Grove Road from our development. We're showing large vegetated buffers, 50-foot vegetated buffers, to my knowledge, that far exceeds what the county's minimum requirements are for landscape buffering. The plan shows sidewalks, and we'll have streetscapes to enhance the development. Also, we understand that there are some environmentally sensitive areas in the back, which is why we're showing such a large green space within this development, and approximately 48% of the site would remain community green-spaced area. So that would be the reason for requesting a tighter, dense development with a, with a smaller lot size. But again, that's, that's a case for variance, the Planning Commission for variance. I know that there's been some discussion about construction times, education, education-wise, things like that. I wanted to kind of go with you all, if you approve this request this evening, best-case scenario with design and review, you're looking at about 12 months until they can even get started building the subdivision. And from there, total, you're looking at 18 to 20 months total to start building houses. So at the earliest, you're looking at 24 months before the first house ever comes online. And so, we feel like that would give ample opportunity for any considerations, whether that be educational or what have you, to, to make arrangements for these, these potential houses to come on board. So that would respectfully request your consideration for approval. If you have any questions, I think that maybe somebody else who wants to speak at this time, but I'll be waiting for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Board of Commissioners, and Frank Jenkins, and I, Jenkins, boy, Walter and Carter, San Antonio. And I'm happy to be here representing Mr. Rowe and Mr. Lance in this, what I consider a very excellent proposal. In most local governments that I work with, they have open proposals like this, as opposed to the kind that citizens are quite opposed to, there is no opposition from citizens to this particular project. I want to remind you, it was approved by the Planning Commission 4 to 0, and it is consistent with your land use plan. Planning is very important in a county, in what you accept, and what you agree is on your property. The land use plan calls this area as a character area, suburban neighborhood, up to four units an acre is what's approved under your comprehensive plan. And the proposal that's being made is 2.7 units per acre, so considerably less than the maximum that would be allowed under the neighborhood, suburban neighborhood. And also, R3 zoning has been listed in your comprehensive plan, is being added with the suburban neighborhood. A1, which is what it is now... A one, which is what it is now, means it's not feasible to develop this property. That requires at least three acre lots, and the developer is proposing to put in sidewalks, to put the infrastructure in, to make the significant improvements in Moore Road, which would bring a little bit to the county, and also to reserve forty-eight percent of this property for open space, which is pretty significant. I rarely see that kind of open space provided. And that's the reason that they're hoping to, to have a hundred and two or three different single-family homes, to make it feasible, because so much of the land is being devoted to open space. Also, I think it's significant that this area is surrounded by single-family subdivisions. There are sam, single-family subdivisions that bore two sides, or two, two sides of this property. So they would just be simply joining in with other single-family subdivisions that have been developed in this area. And I think in the long-range planning and under the comprehensive plan, that's what the county intends, and this area is without a single-family subdivision. And this is consistent with that. You had asked about, concerns about the school system, and I saw the letter that the superintendent responded to your question. The school system didn't object, and I think that's clear from the letter you received. The superintendent said they may have to make some adjustments, but I think it sure is important to what Mr. Blackwood said, that we're talking about four or five years down the road before this subdivision would be built out. Plenty of time to raise any students and accommodate them in the school system. I've submitted a letter in which I have raised constitutional issues, I'm not going to go over those, other than to say that I think when you have land that is adjacent to this land, that has been approved for single-family development, the equal protection and equal accommodation for this property owner would suggest certainly that it could be a single-family subdivision, and R three seems to be an appropriate one. And Mr. Rowe, who's the owner of the property, has asked you to rezonate, so that he can then sell it for development. Mr. Lance will be looking at development of the property, and so we're asking that you approve R three. No concern for you, or consideration for you, and your approval for the variances, because we have to go to the Planning Commission.
That's what we have to mention, because we just got a gentleman behind you, saying we're asking for approval for a R three with a hundred and three lots, which obviously states that there are variances. So I agree, and that's what I'm saying, and I think the issue is we're getting skewed. But we, we have map engineering telling us we're applying for R three and a hundred and three homes. Once we're aware, we have to address it.
We're, we're not applying, or asking the Commission to approve a hundred and three homes.
That's what he was.
I understand it. But speaking on behalf of the owner, and on behalf of Mr. Lance, we are asking for the R three zoning on the property, and we're not asking you to decondition a hundred and three homes. That's a different matter that would need to be taken up with the planning commission. So what we ask only is that you approve the, the R three zoning on this property. Is that clear, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. We appreciate you doing that.
Do we have anybody else that might speak? About this, sir?
I'm Gary Richan, I live in the county, and we're facing a similar situation over close to our place. They're asking for the hundred and three lots, it's obvious, that's the plan they brought to you. I think that if you grant the R three zoning, knowing that they're going back and requesting a variance, or set a precedence in the county, middle of the people do the same thing. I, I don't think that, at this, at this point, if they want the R three, they need to send you a drawing with R three dimensions on it. Y'all know that the variances, they can go back to the Planning Commission, get approval on the variances. Mr. Chairman, I think you said it would take a hundred and three variances to get a hundred and three houses in there. Planning Commission could approve that, and nobody has any say something on that. But I don't think we really want a set of precedents by approving this, knowing that you're going to ask for a hundred and three variances to get the subdivision. Thank you.
May I have my seat?
Yes, I've got a question for Frank.
Yes, sir.
Is it not one of the reasons why we've got all those green spaces, because most of it is unbuildable land, and wasn't waiting, and all this?
Yeah, that's correct. A lot of it is in the puzzle, which, which makes it critical that zoning be something to build a sufficient number of lots under the R three zoning, to make it feasible. That, forty-eight percent of that tract of land is not going to be developed, so that's pretty significant loss. Building is a waste of dollars.
Yes, sir. For map?
Yes, sir.
Did, did y'all calculate how many houses could be built in a R three?
We did. I think that was, the number was sixty-one, sixty-one single-family residences at the ten thousand square foot, and on eighty-foot crunch. And at that rate, that, that was, that was the, the point which we understood that that number was, was not feasible to, to do development of this size, and so that's why we came up with a different, different plan.
Your math is interesting. I did some quick math myself, and I came up with sixty-three, so we're, we're basically right on. I guess the problem here is, I have no problem with developers or adult months. R three is wide old plantation, it's a beautiful area. The problem is, when you are asking us to grant to go R three, knowing that we're going to basically rewrite the R three zoning laws. Because you want, R three is eighty-foot lots. If you want to build sixty-three houses, sixty-five houses, great. But you can't come and ask us to approve R three, knowing that you want us to put in a hundred and five lots.
Let me say, we don't know, we don't need to put in a hundred and five.
Well, then y'all should quit breaking the draw, and just show them. I'll bring that draw, and just show you that, which is like entering it as an exhibit, basically, if you don't want to add them out. So once it's on the table, we have to look at that.
I understand.
I mean, if you didn't want us to, you should have brought, because this is the second time we've presented a draw of a hundred and three, a hundred and four houses, and then say, oh, don't look at that. We've got a less, it's a completely different case. Well, it's a completely different case, and shouldn't be brought out. And this?
Well, we understand that if you approve R three, that means we can build sixty-one, two, or four lot housing in the property. And that's all you need to approve. We don't know if there will be any improvement from any greater number of houses in the property. That's a totally different matter. We're just asking the Commission to approve R three.
Sir, if we approve R three, can you build sixty-three, sixty-four houses in there? You cannot.
No, it won't work. You pay the higher end, do the first part of that, I don't talk a lot of other things next to that. I might get both Mr. King's about to do.
That's, that's, that's not my objective.
Chief Cam, sit your ear, and I can put you on spot, buddy. Far as on the fire safety side of it, if we're going from, anywhere from thirty-foot wide road frontage lots to sixty-foot lots versus, I think R three is eighty-foot wide lots, do you see, far as on the fire safety, your structures, a, a change, whether you're going to do, being working thirty to fifty feet of separation?
Yes, sir. I came up and looked at that plot after the last meeting, and had some discussion. But the problem you run into when they're real close together is the exposure, and so that requires more equipment, more water. The only thing I would like to say, if you grant a variance, where we have the distance , damn it, and I'm not, I'm not against it by no means, I would just like to say that we have enough water in the ground, because typically, when they're real close together, like you say, houses in City, City of Jandua, Atlanta, usually when you're out on the scene, if there's any heavy involvement, you don't have one house burning, you have three houses good one. Because a lot of times, you have that directed punishment on the structure itself. So the distance that we currently have in most of our subdivisions, that good distance, they, the houses typically take a beating, but what you might see is just noted, by, by the side end of the house, hugs up pretty good, the integrity of the construction, so. And so typically, we just require, you know, five hundred GPM, typically for residential at a six-inch main. So, you know, if you gave a variance to something like that, I would like to be able to just have the opportunity to sit and calculate the fire flows, if this house is on fire, and exposure to these, and we, and we have formulas for all that, of the dimensions, and how close the homes are to one another. So if we pull up on the scene, and we do have that house well involved, and other two going, then we have a difficult problem. So we don't need to bend the deficit with the water, we need to be in a positive place with that. That's the only thing I would, I would ask.
Do you have a question? I did some calculations, and I came up with more than you. I asked about seventy-two homes, if it was on R three, and I just ran the anger through the road.
There's road for ponds, and attention to things like that, and from there, we, we didn't, we didn't.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the R three, with the stipulation we have to have seventy-two homes, which I believe would be what the R three would be if we adhered to those rules of the property. I don't feel comfortable in not putting some house people on. Chad, is that fair?
You can, the Board can make a motion to zone with conditions, and I can give one of the conditions for zone.
Very concerned about precedent, y'all, for that, because we do it for one developer, we got to ship for every developer, and that means you divide this community. It's a problem, you would have to be aware, too bad, if you just put that out. Well, I believe, that's the motion I'd like to grant to R three, with the cap of seventy-two homes, which I feel would be seventy-two, and I'm true, fine price, and we're out. And here's the R three, rules of the re-classes. If I was to make a statement, that'd be ready for the House of Lords.
What, I'll say?
Make a motion, and I'll say.
Mr. Chairman, on the, I guess it would be for James, on the upgrading of the road, is that part of the stipulations of planning and zoning, or would we make, really make that part of the motion, or am I being jacked?
Hoyt, or, excuse me, Mr. Lance, has agreed to make any improved, improvements to Moore Road, and that, that is actually in our ordinance. Buster and Jeremy have met out there and, and looked at everything with Mr. Lance, and he's agreed to, to upgrade it to meet county standards.
But if you want the record to be clear, you could also add that as an additional stipulation. Do you have any motions amended?
We just, just like you, Mr. Chairman, I'd ask if you would give a motion, and that in, that way it would be a very good record.
Is that bad? Do you think that motion goes up?
Yes, sir.
Uh, is Justice Wade set the vote? Mark, do you want to do a roundtable vote?
Well, let me ask, Feller, I wish wrong, your second thing.
Yes, I will. I'll second the mid-motion.
Yes or no? Hey, you want to clarify the motion or not?
As I understand it, the motion as amended would be to approve the Planning Commission's rezoning request to R three, with the stipulation that Moore Road be upgraded to county standards per our ordinance, and limiting the number of houses to seventy-two, provided all of the lots and houses met the other R three requirements of our efforts. Is that correct?
That's correct. Mark?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Cutler?
Yes.
Chairman Hemrich?
Yes.
Mr. Winters?
No.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Thank you. Be honest.
Approval of zoning case, rezoning of Tax Map sixty-two, parcels seven, seventy-three, or seventy-dash-three, seventy-dash-four, seventy-dash-five, seventy-dash-six, seventy-dash-seven, seventy-dash-eight, seventy-dash-nine, and seventy-dash-ten, from R one to A one. On April twelfth, two thousand and six, plat was completed for development, and it was Brookside Acres, which is located off of Seven Dollar Road. The development consists of two private roads, Righteous Lane and Divine Drive, and eleven lots. All of the lots are over five and a half acres. The zoning maps indicate that the property in question is currently zoned R one, however, the Planning Commission, zoning office, and other applicable parties all signed off on the plat in August of two thousand and six. The plat states the, the properties are all zoned to A one agriculture. All of the lots within this development were sold to individuals that had purchased agricultural properties due to the indication on the reported plat. So basically, there was clerical error, and they were sold as A one. The Planning Commission requests that the Board of Commissioners, excuse me, the Planning Commission and staff request that the Board of Commissioners officially rezonate the above-named parcels to A one to match the reported plat for the development, and to correct any errors that were false.
Do we have any one here for? Yes, sir. Please, that's your man.
I'm Amy Green of Righteous Lane, off, off of Seven Dollar Road. As Mr. Davis mentioned, the property was sold to us, under the understanding that it was A one property, they were basically sold as many of them. It was brought to our attention, or to my attention, via the signs that were posted at the top of my drive line, that it was actually incorrect. And after many phone calls with the zoning office, and with Fay, and I spoke with a couple of y'all as well, I don't have a problem, and I'm not opposed to it, to A one, as is recorded in the plat book. My issue's coming that I'm looking here at these lot numbers, all the lot numbers that are on this recorded plat are on here. Because there's eleven lots there, there's not eleven lots on here. There's some parcels that are missing, and I know which ones I don't, but based upon lot numbers. So I'm now really confused as to, I got part of it going to go by A one, like it's supposed to, and then I got some that aren't listed on this form.
Okay, I can lay them on?
Yes, go up on here, one, two, three, four, five, six.
Do you mind walking over here?
No, I do, I normally go about that on here, so.
Well, I'm just walking out of one. There's eight now. Yeah.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. What, they're on here.
There's just eight now.
There's just a.
Eight now, for something else. Hang on, the zone town's all.
So that's why I'm confused, because I've got a number of lots on here.
Can you clarify?
The only thing I, I would know is that if the tax assessor's office may have combined several of those, several of the lots into, into one parcel, the property owners can go ahead and request that the assessor's office combine it. So I can amend the request to match the reported plat.
I think we need to, since this is that. I think we need to, since this is actual original plat, we have to...
There's actually the own, there are, there is a set of lots out there that was combined, and the others, and those lots are here, still the place. Um, which still leaves out the one that is kind of in question, and the one that's kind of causing some issues, is that particular lot. So, if we're going to enforce it for everybody and change everybody, then I needed to go to him.
Before we record, hey, I just want to make sure we don't make any...
Absolutely.
And long as, I don't have a problem, and I'm pretty sure I'm right on this, um, and I've heard lots and many two proper attorneys, that long as we go to R-one, all of our original covenants and stipulations on all that land stays in effect.
A-one.
Or going to A-one, yes. That everything stays the same, and even the road structure stays the same as far as points of access, and all of this is a subsidy and a break.
This is just for the zoning, the zoning office has nothing to do with...
It's, or anything like that, it's just for zoning.
Okay, so, who handles the road structure, and I'm sorry, does that...
It's, it's private, so that's up to the individual property owners.
It's basically because the county ordinance is a subsidy and a break.
So, I'm just trying, I, I just want to make sure, because I've got one particular person that is trying to change everything for everybody.
The only thing we're trying to address is that it just makes sure it's on A-one. And then, if there's a particular issue, it'll probably come back, and if we can look back, go to the zoning board.
Okay.
Jerry, let's go.
So, okay, so, long as we can have that to show everybody that's in that couple of things, or eleven lots...
Everybody else in this plat, and I assume...
Yes, sir, and that's the plat that I, the original plat that I have.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, then, I'm getting my...
Okay, thank you.
What, what I'll do is, uh, on the resolution, let's just reference the reported plat, and that will take care of it, also if you want, if, if Chad's okay with it, just mention that in the motion, just to match the reported plat.
Okay. Sam, do you have any to answer?
I don't know.
Yeah, I know, I was waiting for you to get to it.
I'm done, I'm done.
Okay. Clark, by far, Jim, come on.
Mr. Chairman, Council, I'm Ben Wolfley, uh, we're, uh, one of the owners in this group, we actually own two lots that are put together, uh, lot number two, number eleven, and, uh, when we purchased the property, of course, it was purchased subject to the covenants, the subject to R standing at that time, which was R-one, and acknowledging the error to A-one, that's perfectly fine. But, we also very much would agree and share the concern that if it goes to R-one, if that will provide an avenue for one of the, of the plot owners to convert some kind of commercial business.
And wait, that, the zoning has no...
Right, right, and I understand that, I didn't know if there's anything we can put in the zoning chain, subject to the covenants already agreed to...
Well, A-one actually has its own set of rules, so it's...
Okay, so, there's nothing we can put in it from this position that would restrict somebody from doing anything that's, that's not altering the covenants?
Uh, it would have to adhere to the evidence in the A-one zone.
Okay, so, the covenants, while we don't deal with the covenants here, the covenants are still in force regardless of the zoning. Okay, that's where the issue, that's where the issue...
The covenants, you're making, it's just going to be approved as A-one, just the plat.
With restrictions on...
Signed off that it wasn't A-one, if it's not out there.
Okay, we get that.
That's the only thing we're...
Okay, good, that's, we just want to make sure, we didn't want us to turn to a commercial business.
We didn't want that. We didn't want that. Right, I'll come back.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would say that if there are issues with the covenants, it would be up to the property owners to get together and, and, uh, work with an attorney to, you know, deal with the other property owner that might be violating the covenants. That's not something the county has anything to do with. But if they are wanting a commercial business out of agriculture, that is something, you know.
And draw the standard, so it's a standard, is that...
Ma'am?
Some standard roads in Coos County have four driveway lawns on them.
Yes.
Yeah, someone's trying to put a fifth driveway, is that a county issue, or is that a court issue based on covenants?
And being like I was saying earlier, if you have a driveway issue, please come back and address it with the zoning board, we'll start.
Okay, so, it is a zoning?
What, what I'll say is...
I'm trying to stay on the A-one topic, is what I'm...
Right, I was just asking...
No, we're not, we're not going to get off path, we're here to approve A-one zoning because that's what the plat shows.
Right, and I was just asking a simple question, and so...
But you, I'd be more than happy to talk to you after the meeting.
I'll talk to you after that.
You can go with the zoning. You need to go with the zoning.
Right, and I've spoken with him, I just wanted to make it official somehow that I, you know, we addressed this issue, so I can address this issue, you know, it's not a small, it blew in the face, and I'm not getting to run around.
But again, the zoning has no regard to the driveway, we're just trying to address the zoning.
Okay.
A-one versus B.
One last question, uh, chief, exactly, uh, you're up. Um, does, now that we're correcting a clerical error, we're giving, so I'm talking after you. We're correcting a clerical error, moving from R-one to A-one, can we pay property taxes based on R-one, uh, zoning category? Do we, uh, is there any process for a payment, you know, giving the refund back those property taxes, or is it just correct and move forward?
You know, everybody bought a property, it says on the table, and they're in a shop with it all, that's called a property, and that's what we're...
Well, we all live in A-one, but we're paying R-one taxes.
I don't think there's an extreme amount of difference, but that we can get, uh...
You can appeal...
Yeah, the taxman left right before his name got dropped. He's been there the whole night.
Mr. Chairman, they would have the right to file a request to refund for a period of three years.
So, they didn't say it's a property, they didn't say it was sixty, is that correct?
Right.
So, that would fit in the legal. Now, we handle that, tell them the procedure?
They would file that with the, uh, tax assessors.
They'll carry that.
Thank you.
Now...
Yes, sir.
Once we can fix this correct player, or that thing going on right now, these left of lots, that would affect, going from A-one, going to R-one, A-one.
Not that I'm aware of, no, sir.
Not much my town would do with that.
That is, that is R-one, you can't go to R-one, so... That's one of the things we're trying to make a price for, because y'all bought it as a...
Hey, well, that's, we're under the impression of the A-one, which isn't the issue without the issue, it's just the covenant, because we would go with the, they can enforce covenants on the A-one land.
We, y'all, y'all bought neighborhoods that had covenants.
Right, and that's what we want, yes.
That is, y'all's, I don't think, that land, that's between the neighborhoods. So, that's where you got the hand of the covenant.
Covenants, period. The county doesn't enforce covenants at all.
There's only rules of laws, that's a, the covenants are neighborhood associations.
That's right.
Okay? All right. Do I have a motion to, to where we started, A-one, I don't understand.
Same.
And that's for the eleven lots. For all of them, I refer to the lot, then we can all report the plat. We make no more mistakes. I'm in favor of what Angie missed, say aye. You and your towns have a look at that.
Thank you.
I know, I... Thank Chief Camp for your great work on getting the...
Thanks for your work, I have to increase left, but I don't thank her, it's all...
I'd also like to go that to, to Chief Camp and all your chiefs, and I know it goes all the way down to the volunteers that fired our, and, uh, that was a lot of our work going through the ASO process, and, uh, over that thing to do, so, uh, just to give all your staff, uh, great job, ridiculous, and... I have a next one, too, I also want to mention the rego board, because the staff that's there, they would not be there to, that's the, how to deal with... She was a very big part happening right here, the rego board, and...
And I, I think, Caducea, Caducea usually, I'm going to put in a lot of fire hydrants, and, which I know that's part of the loss program, and all of it, but I know that's, that's it, and I know they work with y'all, too, to, to help the, the water systems, so they, it's a big group that, uh, is, is good to care of that.
Thank y'all for coming out, uh, have a motion, want to make a statement?
Say aye.
Legal in person, that? Row, y'all, vote.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Fisher Cutler?
Yes.
Sharon Heimer?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Can you make me that one? They're very persuasive. This time, we have a motion to come out and say...
So, move, say aye.
Uh, if I was coming out, say aye.
Aye.
We were all ready to take a decision, maybe now to call a decision. Skip?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, uh, the county, uh, obtains service for its emergency radio equipment through the city of Chattanooga. Uh, we've done that over a period of years, and what we do, we, we pay for, uh, one bill from the city of Chattanooga, then Carl allocates it out among the emergency users of the equipment and writes it off of public, uh, the public budget of the people that use the radios. Uh, over a period of time, we accumulated a receivable from Angel EMS, uh, in the approximate amount of twenty-eight thousand dollars, based on his use of sixty-four radios, in connection with, uh, Angel Emergency Ambulance Service. Uh, in the contract that we have with Angel, we did not address the payment of those fees, but over a period of time, he has paid those fees. We started to discuss, uh, some issues related to that receivable with him. He reported to Carl that actually he used twenty radios rather than sixty-four radios. The effect of that would be to write down that receivable from approximately twenty-eight thousand dollars to, uh, eighty-nine hundred dollars. Uh, what is recommended by the staff is that we collect the eighty-nine hundred dollars for money that the county owes him as his subsidy, and that, uh, we write off the rest of the, the rest of the money for the radio maintenance.
I do have a motion, so, move. Say aye. Do you have any questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And you, next, yeah.
Mr. Chairman and board members, the county is currently involved in a pending lawsuit in the Caducea County Superior Board with Vertical Earth Inc., who was the contractor for the improvements out at the Jack Maddox Recreation Park that paid for by two thousand and nine's loss. Most, most of the work was done, we did get into a contract dispute toward the end, the issues were whether the contractor timely completed, the contractor was liable for liquidated damages, whether they adequately completed all the work under the contract, and whether they damaged our parking lot and some other areas when they did the work. We are withholding, or we are holding currently a hundred and fifty-three thousand, four hundred forty-two dollars and seventy-one cents as retainage under the contract. Normally, that would be paid to the contractor at the end of the contract as part of the contract price, if they did all the work timely and correctly. But because of that dispute, we've been holding this money. Now, in the litigation, the contractor claims they've done tens of thousands of dollars of extra work, that they reported to our engineer, and that their engineer instructed them to do, but that the engineer held all the change orders until the end and didn't provide the change orders to the county. We took this dispute to mediation, to see how we could reach an agreement potentially to divide the funds in question. At the mediation that Carl Henson and I attended, we reached a tentative recommended agreement that we recommend to this board for one hundred thousand of the retainedage funds to be paid to the contractor, and fifty-three thousand, four hundred forty-two dollars and seventy-one cents of that money to be paid to the county, to compensate the county for the delays in the project, and for the cost of repaving the parking area out there, which we have done in-house with the county. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions. If the board approves this agreement, it settles all issues in the lawsuit, ends the litigation, and settles any disputes under the contract.
I have a motion, so, move. This is the, uh, the one, this two thousand and fourteen, correct?
I believe that's correct. The contract was entered into in April of two thousand and fourteen.
Any questions, comments? Any waste of money? Any other questions, comments? And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Chairman. All right, it's time that I have a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Say aye. All in favor of the adjourn, say aye.
Aye.